I would like to call this board, this village board meeting of Thursday, August 1st, 2024 to order. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui? Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojek?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I want to welcome everybody after recess about forty-five days at least. And now I'm going to start the executive session. Collective negotiation, negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to open meeting Act 5 ILC 120, obligate 2C2. Is there a motion to recess to executive session for the purpose of discussion, collective negotiating matters between the public body and the, and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedule for one or more classes of employees pursuant to open meeting Act 5 ILCS 120, obligate 2C2? Any motion for that? Trustee Pat?
Motion to move to executive session.
Trustee Light?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
This meeting is recessed to executive session. I would like to call this village board meeting back to order.
We need the motion to reconvene.
Oh, motion to reconvene.
You can just call, you can call it. Okay. That's good.
We now move on to see petitions and communications. Trustee Schmidt, please.
National Night Out Against Crime is celebrated annually on the first Tuesday in August by law enforcement agencies across the United States. Glendale Heights Police Department invites you and your family to join them on Tuesday, August 6th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the village campus and show your support for crime and drug prevention in Glendale Heights. Glendale Heights Police Department has prepared an evening of fun, featuring a police dunk tank, gang games, face painting, a visit from McGruff, the crime fighting mascot, demonstrations, free hot dogs and hamburgers and more. The Glendale Heights Police Department will also be holding a blood drive on Tuesday, August 6th, from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. For more information, please contact Tanya Mako at 630-909-5459. The Glendale Heights Police Department is hosting their annual Citizens Police Academy. The Citizens Police Academy will be held Wednesdays from September 4th through November 13th and features a realistic view of police work taught by Glendale Heights Police Officers. Enrollment is free and open to citizens eighteen years of age and older who live or work in Glendale Heights. Applications for enrollment can be downloaded and printed from the village website. For more information, contact the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. I have taken the CPA course twice now and it is excellent. It gives you a whole bunch different perspective of police activity than what you see on TV. That's for sure. Thank you.
Trustee Light, please.
The Village of Glendale Heights has many years of history dating back to our founding date, July 13th, 1959. The village invites everyone to attend our open house at the Glendale Heights Historic House on Saturday, August 24th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, to learn about all the rich history in our community. The historic house is located at 311 Windy Point Drive at Heritage Park. We will be partnering with the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens for a special senior citizen day. For more information, please contact myself, Trustee Michael Light, at 630-909-5308, or Jessica at 630-260-6060. And on my favorite time of the year, the Village of Glendale Heights is gearing up for the annual Show and Shine Car Show and Swap Meet at Cameron Park on Sunday, September 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. There will be eighteen classes of vehicles on display along with, along with food, swap meet, music and more. If you're interested in registering a vehicle or signing up to be a swap meet vendor or crafter, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/carshow to download the registration form. For more information, please contact myself at 630-909-5308. And I look forward to seeing everybody out there. Thank you.
Clerk Schmidt, please.
School will be back in session soon and it is very important to obey speed limits, especially in school zones, and to remain extra cautious and alert for children while driving through our community. Pay extra attention around parked cars, school crossings, bus stops, and anywhere else children might be present. Students should try to keep a regular route to and from school and never walk alone. Always remember to follow traffic signals and crossing guards. For more information, please contact the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070.
Trustee Maritato, please.
The Village of Glendale Heights invite you to the annual Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic on Wednesday, August 28th, for a 10:30 AM shotgun start at Glendale Heights Golf Club. This year, the Charity Golf Classic will be raising funds for local Glendale Heights organizations and charities. If you would like more information, wish to become a host sponsor, or make a raffle prize donation, please call Glendale Heights Golf Club at 630-260-0018. Help us make the annual Charity Golf Classic another great success.
Trustee Pojek, please.
Come out, come out to Cameron Park, September 12th through the 22nd for Oktoberfest, sponsored by Alco Inc. and the Village of Glendale Heights. Enjoy authentic German food and drinks, a live band, dancing, entertainers, and other family-friendly activities. Enter for a chance to win a trip to Germany, which includes a special tour. For information, including hours, entertainment schedule, and admission fees, visit www.glandalehighsoctoberfest.com or call 323-577-3893. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Pojek, please.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is now hiring new police officers. Applications are due by Thursday, August 15th. Join a team of hard-working individuals who have dedicated their careers to protecting and serving the residents of Glendale Heights while staying true to community-oriented policies. That's a wrong word. For applications or more information, please visit, join H-G-H-P-D.org or contact the Glendale Heights Police Department at 630-909-5398.
Trustee Schroeder, please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be this Saturday, August 3rd, at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens, from 10 o'clock to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or the village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302 or contact your local district trustee. Also, the Village of Glendale Heights remembers Patriot Day on Wednesday, September 11th, with a silent parade of first responder vehicles, followed by a candlelight service at 7:15 PM on the front steps of village hall. Please join the Village of Glendale Heights and the Glendale Heights community as we come together for a moment of silence and reflection on Patriot Day. Don't forget those we lost on September 11, 2001. For more information, please call Jessica at 630-260-6060. Thank you.
You're welcome. Number two, recognition 2024 Glendale Heights Fest.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, fest just ended a few weeks ago and I just want to give a special shout out, special thanks to a whole bunch of people for making this fest what it was. It was a challenging fest because of weather. We had to shut the park down three times. Once, we had to evacuate to a school. We probably got 750 people, George, into the school without issue. We had to extend the fireworks to a different day, which actually worked out really, really well, but everybody was safe. And it was because we have such a dedicated staff and very professional, not just police department, but fire department, and all of our public works employees are experienced, who have been on the grounds, know exactly what to do. We had great planning, great communication with our incident command, and everything went smoothly for all the shutdowns that we had to have. And then when they reconvened on Wednesday, the Wednesday event with the fireworks, I'm not a fireworks guy, but that was actually a fantastic fireworks show. And having the vendors back out there and having the people back out there, that was a great Wednesday night event. So, I just want to recognize the Father's Day Committee, led by Committee Chairperson Paula Sabatino, longstanding committee member Marc Costa, along with Jen Fulton, Mayor Coker, Rick Newber, who does all the music and sound, Brad Malloy from the police department, Gary Lopez from Parks or from facilities, Vince Casada from Facilities and Parks, Bill Pauling, Chief, Maureen Pulte, Connie Mars, Tanya Mako, Sue Light, Louisa Ferrari, Mike Pentecost, Jejic Senga, David from PR, along with Louisa, Keith, and special thanks to Jessica Marisich for coordinating the entire week. She, it's her third year here, I think, and she did a great job in taking over for planning the entire event and the entire four days. She did a fantastic job. Glendale Heights Public Works, who directed traffic out on Fulton Avenue and other places, worked with the pedestrians to get everybody into the school in a safe manner. Our Facilities Division, who ensured everything kept working while there. Parks Division, who maintained the grounds during the events. Our ESDA members and certain, ESDA members for directing traffic, all the pedestrian traffic out front, making sure everybody was safe out front. And our certain members from Milton Township for manning the fire line during the fireworks. Couldn't have enough people out there for that. Obviously, the police department and the fire department did fantastic job. We had very, really no incidents to speak of during the entire time. Special thanks to Dr. Williams and Queen B. School District 16 for opening up their facilities to us and making Glenside Middle School the evacuation point, since it's right there. We didn't need it for the one night where we had 750 people or so in the evacuation center. That went very smooth. But special thanks to Dr. Williams and his staff, because he staffed it for us, with employees from the school district inside the building to help unlock and lock. So, special thanks to Queen B. School District for giving us the use of their facility for the emergency shelter. And then finally, ETS Security, they manned all the security at the front. They had the magnetometers, they did all the bag searches. They were, they were the security in the midway so that we could free up officers for the carnival. Very professional. Can't say enough positive things about how they did getting everybody through the lines, fag checks. Everybody felt safe inside our carnival and inside our midway, and that's how a festival should be. So, I just want to give a special shout out to everybody and a special thanks to everybody for making it a safe four days, even though we had some challenges with the weather. But it all worked out and everybody was, seemed to have a good time and everybody was safe. Thank you.
Next is public discussion of agenda items.
Mayor, if we just show the video real quick, I'm sorry.
No, good one.
I thought Dave was playing while I was yapping. And one last shout out to Allied Universal K-9 units for providing us the German shepherds that were at the, were at the gate entrances. They were gunpowder sniffing shepherds. And they didn't charge us for the four days that they were there with two or three dogs.
Yeah, they had seven the last night and six on Saturday.
There you go. So, they didn't have no charge to the village and they made sure that nothing with gunpowder came into the carnival or midway. So, special thanks to Allied Universal. All right, that's it, Mayor.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board meeting, this board on an agenda items only from public? None? You have the consent agenda before you vote. Acting village administrator, Doug, please speak to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Bear with me, it's long. One, approval of the regular board meetings of June 20th, 2024. Two, approval of the committee home meeting minutes of June 20th, 2024. Ratification of the accounts payable listing of July 3rd, 2024, in the amount of $4,303,092.27. Four, ratification of the accounts payable listing of July 18th, 2024, in the amount of $2,318,559.4. Five, approval of the accounts payable listing of August 1st, 2024, in the amount of $3,558,177.20. Six, resolution authorizing execution of change order number one for the fleet's building emergency generator project. Seven, resolution ratifying the renewal of the Glendale Road 200,000 gallon elevated water storage tank rehabilitation and maintenance agreement. Eight, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering for the furnishing professional preliminary design engineering services for the Lake Passera shoreline restoration project. Nine, a resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award purchase order for the purchase of replacement belt filter press parts for the wastewater treatment plant. Ten, a resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the wastewater treatment plant north wet well cleaning project. Eleven, a resolution authorizing payment to the Illinois Department of Transportation pursuant to the joint funding agreement for the construction of the West Fulton Avenue resurface project, tip number 0820055, job number C-91-009-22, project number one QRV658. Twelve, resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award for the basketball court improvement project, authorizing execution of a contract with Patriot Maintenance. And that's for the park at...
Pheasant Ridge.
Pheasant Ridge. Thirteen, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the state of Illinois through its Department of Transportation and the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, for the Illinois 64 North Avenue Improvement Project. Fourteen, a resolution for funding the intergovernmental agreement with the state of Illinois through its Department of Transportation for improvements to Illinois 64 North Avenue within the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Fifteen, a resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award for the asphalt seal coating project, multiple locations in the Village of Glendale Heights. Sixteen, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement with Teemsure Local 700 regarding public works employees. Seventeen, a motion to approve pay request number six to Construction Inc. for the senior center renovation project, total amount not to exceed $142,996.49. Eighteen, a motion to approve pay request number six to Resource Environmental Solutions, LLC, for the Klein Creek Restoration Project, total amount not to exceed $2,316.60. Nineteen, a motion to approve pay request number sixteen to V3 Construction Group for the East Branch Tributary number two channel maintenance project, total amount not to exceed $40,105.81. Twenty, a motion to approve pay request number one to Visu Sewer of Illinois, LLC, for the sanitary sewer CIPP lining various locations projects in a total amount not to exceed $274,908.60. Twenty-one, a motion to approve pay request number ten to Butler Construction Company for the water supplies facility rehabilitation, total amount not to exceed $269,933.54. Twenty-two, a motion to approve pay request number ten to IHC Construction Companies, LLC, for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrades, total amount not to exceed $658,456.84. Twenty-three is approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Schmidt?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Schroeder?
Second.
The consent agenda is approved. If old business, there is a vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there's none. New business, one, a motion to waive first reading on new business items two through six. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business items two through six? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business items two through six is approved. Number two, an ordinance waiving bid authorizing the issuance of notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract with DAM Mechanical Industries Incorporated for the wastewater treatment plant belt filter press repairs project. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-50. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-50? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Schroeder?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-50 is approved. Number three, an ordinance to correct a surveyor error and to amend section 10-14C-4 entitled "Application for Certificate" fees of Article C entitled "Transfer of Real Estate Inspections" of Chapter 14 entitled "Licensing and Inspection of Properties" of Title 10 entitled "Building Regulations of the Village Court" of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-51. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-51? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Schroeder?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-51 is approved. Number four, an ordinance to amend section 4-3-13 entitled "Number of Licenses" of Chapter 3 entitled "Liquor Control" of Title 4 entitled "Business and License" Registration of the Village Court of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-52. Is there, I need a motion for you. Trustee Schroeder?
So moved.
And Trustee Light?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-52 is approved. Number five, an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus personal property owned by the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI. One 2009 Ford Fusion, first reading is waived. This is ordinance 2024-53. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-53? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Light?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-53 is approved. Number six, an ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, LNI, to waive bid and accept the proposal of Comcast Cable Communications Management, LLC for fiber optic infrastructure and managed network service. First reading waived. This is ordinance 2024-54. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-54? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Schroeder?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-54 is approved. Each public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only from public on agenda item? None? Before I get adjournment motion, everybody on this board, board of trustees, village clerk, and all the respected other directors, managers, all those people and my resident, respected resident are invited on August 4th, Saturday, at the Cameron Park on Pakistani cultural heritage and Independence Stadium.
Mayor, Sunday?
Sunday. Sunday, 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 August 4th. I'm sorry, thank you. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting. Trustee Light?
Motion to return.
Second.
Second, Trustee Schroeder? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Pojek, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
What, excuse me, called the committee of the whole meeting, agenda for Thursday, August 4th, 2024. Will the village note who's here? I mean, would the clerk note who's here?
Some noted.
Does anyone have any additions or deletions? Mike?
Real quick one, signings.
Anybody else? No. Thank you, Mike. Committee reports. Glendale Heights Golf Committee.
No reports.
Historical Committee.
Oh yes, I got one here. I just want to say thank you to everybody that came out to the last open house that we had at the Historic House. It was basically showcasing our emergency services with our fire department and our police department, showing some of their vintage stuff, some of the vintage ways they used to do things with a little explanation. I have to say thank you to Tanya Mako, to George Papas, to Jason Ranala, who brought out some of the very first pieces of equipment that we had in the village of Glendale Heights, which I thought was really awesome. I didn't realize that the way that we communicated in the very beginning was if the porch light was on at the police department, the officer was to stop in to see what was going on. So that was the way they did it back in the day.
That and call boxes.
Call, yeah, call boxes, all the neat stuff. It was really neat. We had a chance to have 30 people that did come out to visit with us. It was a wonderful open house. I also had a chance to meet a gentleman by the name of John Hanson. John, you're here. I wanted to say thank you because I realized that this gentleman donated the player piano that is in the Historic House. And I thought, what a great donation and what a great piece it is to have in the Historic House, and how I look forward to adding more stuff with the residents, like John himself. And I thank you very much for bringing that to my attention because I like to know where this stuff comes from. But that was really about all I had for my report. But thank you, everybody. I look forward to seeing everyone for next month for a senior open house. Maybe you can tell me how to work that phone in the hallway, somebody. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Ordinance Committee.
None. No.
Parks and Rec Committee.
No report.
Property Enhancement Committee.
No report.
Senior Citizens Advisory Committee.
No report.
Okay, discussion regarding... There is none. Others? Signs. Mike?
That's me. I just wanted to say thank you to Acting Village Administrator Doug Flint and Streets Department for getting some caution signs, flashing caution signs put up by Ruskin School on Fullerton Avenue. It was brought to me by a resident that they needed something to draw the attention of people coming up to that intersection and help at the other intersections over by Charles and Gerald, you know, in order to help people there. So I thank everybody for getting that taken care of and at a very quick rate, too. Thank you.
And flashing yield signs for the school crossings that are coming up starting in the next couple of weeks at Ardmore and Fullerton. So our crossing guard there will be a little bit better protected and then going into the park at Ruskin.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, the next is public comment. We have Farzeh Harouni requests to speak. Is she here?
It's written out in advance.
So she put in her request to speak and she can come speak, but you can also come speak after, after.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, they put it out, but you put it online. I don't know if you... I think it was last meeting, right? You showed the website.
We appreciate you doing that. It's not official yet, but we appreciate you doing it.
Trying to follow the rules.
We appreciate you doing it. Please state your name, please.
Farzeh Harouni.
You have three minutes to speak.
All right. Before anything else, so first, it's good to be back. It's good to see everyone again. And I'd like to thank people who've started to research and learn. I've been an education advocate for most of my life, many years, and it always makes me smile when people actually read primary sources and they study. Being said, it's unfortunate when a cursory, one-sided study was used to try to lecture a group of people that has decades of collective knowledge. You know, pretty sparse turnout today, but that's not been the case in the past. But the thing is, had you asked me a year ago whether, you know, sniping toddlers is bad is a controversial statement, I would have said, you're ridiculous. I would have laughed at you, right? A few months ago, I thought if we showed people a reality of forced starvation of sniped children and now a polio outbreak, then they would be quick to say we should support peace. And I didn't think this was controversial. And I know this is something that everyone thinks, oh, we talked about that. We laid that to rest. And yes, we did talk about that. But here's the thing, my peace efforts fell on deaf ears for months. I thought that maybe I could help bring peace in a small way into my own communities, and instead I found open hostility. I went to town after town after town trying to explain to people that everyone deserves the right to food, water, shelter, and I learned just how deep the white supremacy and the corruption runs through our world in this effort. I realized that trying to advocate for peace is not going to happen when there's something that is much deeper and much more insidious that's wrong. I found that in studying and researching, almost every single suburb of Chicago, as well as Chicago itself, has a long history of corruption, of financial crimes. And there was pretty much no city that was exempt from this. So people came about a month ago to ask for fiscal transparency. Why would we do that? It's because we came here. We weren't part of it. We weren't coming all the time. And then we did, and we realized there's something wrong. We started studying. We started learning. We started realizing that something is wrong, and we want cities to work with us to prove and show that our taxes are being used for our roads and they are not being used to line someone's pocket. It's really that simple. We just want to show that there's no rot in any towns. And we're going to be submitting FOIAs. We took a break, as did everyone, but we're going to be submitting FOIAs. We want to try to show that, you know, there's nothing goofy going on, that, you know, the rot isn't in Glendale Heights. So I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Come up and speak.
Good evening. I'm not going to sing a song this time, but my name is Sidhna Singh Mago, and as many of you know, I'm deeply tied to Glendale Heights. I have two aunts that lived here, one uncle, eight cousins that grew up here. So I spent every weekend of my childhood in Glendale Heights. And one thing that I'm deeply concerned about is not too far from here, I would go to Lombard, I'd go to Villa Park, I'd go to Enchanted Castle because our communities are very intertwined with each other. And I don't know if you're aware, but a week ago, I'm very troubled by this news that Alaa Ginnat, sorry if I butchered his name, I apologize, but a Palestinian American who has lived in Lombard for the last 18 years, father of three, was murdered on his driveway. They found him, they don't know what the motive was, but he was found in, on his driveway with a gunshot wound to the head. He's 38 years old, two years younger than me. And we can assume certain things, but one of the things that I do know, and I don't want to, it's an open case, we don't exactly know why he was killed, but we do know he was killed. There was no gun that was found at the scene. They're treating it like a homicide. And I look at, you know, nine IDF soldiers were recently arrested by Israeli military police for the gang rape of a Palestinian man. The gang rape was so severe that he cannot walk right now. And they... And when I think about the justification for this slaughter of civilians, this denial of food, water, and security for the civilians of Geza, when I look at this, it was justified because of unsubstantiated claims of systemic rape on October 7th. And I'm not trying to diminish rape in any which way, but the reality is that the New York Times that issued that piece, they also issued a retraction that they did not have substantiated sources. So they use this claim in order to use, to commit genocide, to commit slaughter of a civilian population. And then, by the way, the Israelis arrested their own people for rape. And they've come to the conclusion that they're using systemic rape as torture. Their Knesset has actually had conversations right now about, is rape legitimate to use as torture against captured detainees in their prisons, which are operating like concentration camps within Israel. Our taxpayers are funding this, and then that specific hatred that continues in our communities, it can lead to the death of people like Alaa Ginnat. And that's what I want you guys to all realize is that, two things, our taxpayer dollars are financing this, our federal government is ignoring it. So what do we do then? And how do we feel safe in our communities? So I appreciate you guys allowing me to take this time, but please consider...
Your hands are up, sir.
I get it, but thank you.
Kim Darlin, 1053 Greenbrier. On a much later note, I'm just here to aggravate you. Mr. Polling, can you please tell me what the cost is now of our golf course? We would normally have $300,000 to $500,000 that we would just pour into the golf course just because. Now that all of that is rented out, what is our cost now? Doug, do you know what I'm looking for?
The cost? I couldn't tell you the cost off the top of my head. I can tell you that the...
Okay, not the cost.
I can tell you that the golf course from greens fees, not, the banquet's out of the picture anymore.
Right.
The golf course with greens fees is profitable.
Totally?
Hmm? That's correct.
Seriously?
Hmm?
Okay. Keith is not here. Can somebody tell me what the cost was for a booth at the fest?
$1,500.
Per booth? And what are we doing with our permit for our soccer field, Doug?
It's approved by ComDev.
Score!
We have, I sent you an email.
You did?
We have a, we have a meeting next week to start the construction process. So I thank you for your diligence in yelling at the DuPage County Water Commission, just like we were.
That is awesome.
Maybe, maybe your, your voice was bigger than ours, but thank you.
No, you're more of a pain in the ass.
There you go. It's okay.
Okay.
But all voices are good when it comes to complaining about lack of timeliness and getting stuff done, but...
So we're going to start on that now, 30 days.
We have a, we have a meeting next Thursday to, with the construction company, to work out the timeline when they can group everybody together to start the work.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hello, I am Martika King. I live in Glendale Heights, have for 17 years, and I'm a mental health counselor for 25. And I want to thank you all. You know, I've observed you and studied you for the past few years. I've learned a lot, and I deeply admire, you wouldn't believe, you know, honestly, whoever is watching, the work of these people. They're running this town. You know, everybody talks about international events. Chester, I want to say to you two, I'm praying for your wife. Is she doing okay? God bless you, I pray. Anyway, so I just had some comments. I personally would like to change the format of the meeting, but I guess you have already, you know. So it's a lot more peaceful. I was listening to a lot of comments of a lot of people. And this is a village meeting, you know. It's supposed to be about the village. I didn't get that at first myself, but, you know, it's a lot of work. And people on the side, too. You may not be known as much, or maybe no more, I don't know. But God, you know, you're all here, you know, generally speaking, a few exceptions. And the people were always lacking. And the people who showed up, then, you know, were kind of debatable in terms of helping the town. But personally, I'd like to change the meetings, you know, to be a little more neighborhood friendly style issues of the village. I would like residents, citizens, to be able to question people who are doing business in Glendale Heights. You know, sometimes I think of questions I have that are not asked, you know, that I think could be relevant to determining who's chosen for various projects and things. So I think there could maybe be more collaboration in that sense. I would like more justice for Ms. Shadri, you know. You know, I've worked with you, I've worked with you, Ms. Hooker, and I do believe you are corrupt, you know, but it's apparently a problem for the town. So that is something. I would like our public schools, actually, to be more accountable to the village because the majority of our property taxes goes to the schools and highly debatable a lot. I think the police may know more about that than, you know, some of the others, of what's going on in the schools. And we're facing a school year now, you know, so that's probably dominating on a lot of people's mind, how their children are going to be educated. And I think there should be maybe a little more interaction there. I, now, of course, it's reading my writing. Oh, I don't think seniors should have to pay property taxes for, for education because, you know, like, their kids aren't in school. And it just makes sense, really. I know that's, I know that's beyond that state and blah, blah, blah. I would like the residents of Glendale Heights, not just the Muslims and Palestinians, and you're wonderful people, all of you, but, you know, and they are percentage. I don't think they're the best. Okay, that's my time up. God bless you guys. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is closed.